Good morning, everyone, and welcome to this morning's media briefing. It's Friday, the 29th of October 2021. I'm just to let you know, this meeting is being recorded. So I would ask that if you are not speaking, that you have your microphones and cameras off, please, unless, of course, you're recording for your own purposes, for your broadcast outlets. I'm Abby Jaikman from the County Council Communications Team. And also with me is Stefan Risho from the City Council, Media Manager at the City, and Alex Paul from the CCG. The briefing will follow our usual format, so with our panel providing updates for their areas. And then after that, I will open the floor to questions. So I'm going to hand over to the panel now. Oh, sorry, I forgot, I didn't introduce them. Amanda Sullivan from CCG, Jonathan Cribbin, who is Director of Public Health for the County Council, and Lucy Harper, Director of Public Health for Nottingham City. And so I'm going to hand over to Amanda to begin for us this morning. Thank you.
Morning, thank you, Abby. So the NHS remains under pressure in all areas. And we are still seeing around half the level of hospital stays that we did in wave one. And this has been relatively consistent for several weeks, linked to the community transmission rates that we're seeing. In addition to that, the NHS is seeing a high demand for a whole range of other illnesses. So as we head into winter, do you get the maximum protection that you can with your flu and coronavirus vaccinations? If you haven't yet had your COVID jab and you're eligible, you can still walk in for your first and second dose. People are still coming forward for their first and second doses. So if you are still not sure, do come forward and have a chat and get your jab. If it's over six months or 182 days since your second jab, and you're over 50, a frontline health or care worker, over 16 with medical conditions that make you more vulnerable, you can get your booster. And there's three ways you can get your booster and protect yourself as we go into winter. You can wait to be contacted by the NHS and you'll get a letter or a text, letting you know that you're invited. And that invite will tell you how to book. It might be a local GP surgery, a pharmacy, or a larger vaccination site. You can book an appointment as well using 119 or the NHS website. And this system is regularly updated. So do keep checking for more appointments coming available if you need to. And you can walk into certain sites as well if you're eligible. It's the Kingsmill Hospital Hub, Mansfield Vaccination Centre, and the Forest Rec site. And we are really pleased, actually, that more people are coming forward for boosters now. And we'll continue to ensure that everybody is able to get your jab. We have a large number now of GP pharmacy sites open in our local communities. And we've got a last few pharmacies coming online soon. So we have around 50 sites in total now. In addition to that, our school vaccination programme is well underway for the 12 to 15 year olds, which is great. We're also offering bookable slots at certain sites through the NHS website additionally, particularly making the best use of the half term period. And additionally to that, we're offering a walk-in service at Kingsmill Hospital for 12 to 15s this Sunday, 12 till 7. So thanks very much, that was all I wanted to say, thanks, Abby.
Thank you, Amanda. I'm going to hand over now to Jonathan, please.
Good morning, everyone, and nice to see you all again. I'm going to say a word or two about the rates that we see in Nottinghamshire County. I'll make reference as well to some of the pressures that we see in the local health and care system. And then make one or two points around vaccinations, return to school, and also one or two other measures. So in England as a whole, we see that the rate at the moment is 481 per 100,000. That's across England as a whole. And Nottinghamshire County now stands at 433 per 100,000, so a little lower than England average. And I'm pleased to say, lower than I would have reported a week and a fortnight ago. But actually, any sense of reassurance that we might grab from that would actually be somewhat misplaced. The rates that we have are still quite a concern. And really what I want to underline this morning is the need for ongoing caution. So let me say some more about that. The decline in rates that we've seen in Nottinghamshire County started just a few days before the schools broke up for their half term and continued for 10 days or so through to last weekend or thereabouts. But actually, since then, we've seen them flattening out. So rates are slightly lower in the county than they were a week or 10 days ago, but still remain at a very high level. If I give you a feel for the range that we see across Nottinghamshire, the lowest rate that we have at the moment is in Mansfield, which has a rate of 346 per 100,000. And in Rushcliff, a rate of 515 per 100,000. And the other districts and boroughs falling between those two. But in overall terms, this means that each day of the week, we're still finding in excess of 500 people in Nottinghamshire County being tested positive for coronavirus. If I say a word or two about how that's affecting different age groups. Whereas rates amongst children and young people were falling quite steeply in the lead up to half term. And not surprisingly, that has continued over the last week or so. We found that rates amongst adults fell a little, but not at the same steep rate that we'd seen them falling amongst children and young people. And already, we see them rising again. And in fact, we observe the same amongst older adults as well. So people aged over 60, we also see rates increasing there. And of course, this is a concern because of the extreme pressures that the health and care system finds itself under, which arise not only from COVID by any means, but from a range of different pressures, but to which COVID contributes. And of course, it's not just an issue for organisations and services. Being hospitalised with COVID is extremely serious for the individuals concerned and for the concern that it brings to families. And we continue to be concerned also about the effects of long COVID, which lasts weeks and months beyond. So I want to underline once again that coronavirus is not over yet. We've still got the winter ahead. And with that in mind, I'm really encouraged to hear about the progress with the vaccine programme, the rollout of the booster programme, and the rollouts to people aged 12 to 15. In addition to that, I'm also pleased to see that in the county, we continue to see people coming forward for their first dose. So I'm aware that for various reasons, people may have paused earlier in the year and decided at that point, they would just wait and see how effective the vaccines were and how safe they turned out to be. And now, of course, we find that they're being enormously effective at reducing hospitalisations and are indeed very safe. And as a result of that, really pleased to see that people coming forward still for their very first doses. Now, if that's you, then you can book an appointment for yourself still on the NHS website, nhs.uk. Or if you would rather, you can simply walk into our clinics, either at Kingsmill Hospital or at the Forest Recreation Ground. So that's still something that is available to you too. And now, of course, we're looking ahead now after the weekend to a return to schools. And what I really want to emphasise to people of secondary age or who are at college as students, that everyone should be making sure that they take a rapid COVID lateral flow test before returning to school or college. And then you should all be doing that twice weekly thereafter. And I'd like to invite you as well to urge your family and your friends too, to make sure that you're building that into your routines in your household. Because it's a way that you can keep yourself and those around you safe and your school and college functioning really well. And then finally, let me say one or two things just about other measures. I think we've emphasised throughout that vaccines have been enormously effective at preventing hospitalisations. And that's the reason why we're still working with partners so hard to make sure that everyone in Nottinghamshire is able to take advantage of a vaccine or a booster. But alongside that, we've also emphasised that we'll need other measures and that we'll be needing to follow those to keep ourselves really safe through the winter period. So I would once again urge you, if you find that you've got symptoms that you think might even possibly be coronavirus, then I'd urge you to come forward for a PCR test and stay at home while you're waiting for the results to those tests. Because you can help stop the spread of coronavirus in that way. In addition to that, it's really important that all of us, when we're out and about and in crowded enclosed spaces, and especially when we're on public transport, to make sure that we're using face coverings. Do wash your hands frequently when you're moving in and coming away from environments like that. And then finally, the other thing to mention that I'm aware of now, as the weather gets cooler, it remains really important that we continue to keep enclosed spaces, indoor spaces, really well ventilated. So keep those windows open if you possibly can. And if you're socialising, hang on to these last few days when it's going to be possible to do that out of doors, in the fresh air, with friends and family. Because again, it's another way that we keep one another really safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, Jonathan. And now I'm going to hand over to Lucy. Thanks, Lucy.
Morning, everyone. So the position in the city is a little different from that in the county and in the rest of England. We have a lower rate than England at about 277 against the about 480 for England. But that doesn't mean to say that COVID has gone from Nottingham. 270 is still a very high rate. And it still means that every day, over 100 people are testing positive and family and friends are being affected. People aren't being able to go to work or go to school. And there's the chance of people getting very poorly. So COVID hasn't gone from the city yet. And actually, looking at our rates, what we're seeing is a very gradual increase. And it's in our adult population of people who are now feeling more confident for going out and about. And that's great that people are getting out and about. We all missed seeing loved ones and family and friends last year. But really important that as we're doing that, we remember the things that we can do to keep both ourselves and other people safe. Michelle, I just realised, I don't think I'm spotlighted. Or am I?
You are on my screen.
Brilliant, okay.
You're on mine too.
Perfect. This weekend is a big weekend for getting out and about. It's Halloween, and so whether you're going trick or treating or going to some parties, try and think about what you can do to keep yourself and others safe. Get tested before you go out and about. Know your COVID status. If you've got symptoms, no matter how mild, get a PCR test. Try and keep your distance from others, particularly if you're trick or treating. You don't know the vulnerability of other people. And remember to wash your hands, particularly before you start putting those sweets in. And from a public health perspective, don't eat too many sweets. The other thing around this weekend is the back to school message and the importance of getting tested, both for the pupils in school or students in college, but also for their friends and family. That's how we can quickly get hold of COVID and stop it from spreading in our schools. Really important. Getting rapid tests is still free and easy. So you can pick them up from any of our rapid testing sites in the city, and the details of that are on our website. Or you can pick them up from pharmacies. And you'll just need to register online before you go and pick that up from a pharmacy. But you'll still get your kit and they're still free of charge. Really important, again, that you test regularly, using the rapid kits, even when you don't have symptoms. This is also the season of colds. So people are already snuffling, blowing their noses, sneezing or coughing on buses. If you've got symptoms that may possibly be one of the three symptoms of COVID, the beginnings of a cough, please have a PCR test. Testing is really important, particularly at an early stage where you can reduce the spread to others. And even if it turns out that your test is negative and you're still coughing and sneezing, please remember to wear a face covering, wash your hands and keep your distance. We really need to keep down the spread of colds and flu as well as COVID through these winter months in order to protect those people that may be made more vulnerable by having a cold as well as COVID. So face coverings and hand washing and keeping your distance isn't just for COVID. And we saw this last year when we had really low rates of flu because everybody was following those basic principles. And finally, vaccination. Brilliant news that our young people are getting vaccinated in school, but now have an offer to also be able to get vaccinated at some of our big vaccination sites in the city. That's an appointment at Forest Rec. We're going to be delivering vaccines through schools first, and then people will be able to come along and get vaccinated. We're seeing fantastic participation from young people. But if you haven't had your first dose, if you're an adult and haven't had your first dose, please come along. You can walk into Forest Rec, or if it's easier for you to make an appointment and have that vaccine. We're seeing a huge difference it's making in how poorly people get from COVID. Some people are having very mild COVID at home, and we're seeing the impact in hospital of reduced admissions for people who are really poorly. The vaccine is working and makes a difference. Thanks, I'll stop there.
Thank you, Lucy. So that was very helpful guidance and advice from all of our panel on what we can keep on doing to keep ourselves and others safe. And Lucy, I particularly liked the advice around not eating too many sweets. So I'll bear that in myself, thank you. I will open the floor for questions now. And just to remind everybody, please, can you raise your hands? I know there's one hand that's gone up already. If we limit it to one question and one follow-up question, that would be really helpful. Please, could you state where you're from so that that's captured on the recording, please? And if I miss you, if I miss your hand, I will make sure I come back at the end to make sure there are no outstanding questions. So I'm going to, I think the first hand that I saw up was from Hugh, Hugh Caswell.
Morning, everyone. Yeah, Hugh Caswell from BBC Nottingham. I'll direct this to Amanda first, I think, but I'd welcome any contribution from the other speakers as well, if you want to. I see, and you sort of touched on this, Amanda, I see that COVID-related hospital admissions in Nottinghamshire have risen again in the last couple of weeks. And I imagine this is, as has always been true, lagging behind the rising cases that we had previously seen. So looking at where we are now, do you expect that COVID hospital pressure to keep going in that direction, the wrong direction?
Yes, thank you, Hugh. Yes, we are very concerned about keeping the NHS functioning really well over winter. And clearly, the 150 people that we have in hospital or thereabouts with COVID does add to the overall pressures of people with heart attacks and other emergencies as well. So we are concerned to keep COVID admissions to an absolute minimum that we can. And the best way of doing that is to get your booster, get your first and second jabs if you haven't already had them and you're eligible. And also to observe social distancing, face covering wearing, washing your hands, the same. So the same precautions. And that will help prevent you from getting flu and other winter conditions as well. We are seeing other viruses around, the winter vomiting viruses around. Flu is starting to be around, other respiratory infections. All of those you can help to minimise by taking those same measures.
Okay, thank you, Amanda. We've mentioned schools returning on Monday as well. With infections in school-aged children being the big driver of transmission in recent months, obviously. And again, factoring in that lag. Jonathan and Lucy, how much of a dent in infection rates could half term have made, do you think? And conversely, how much do you expect the return of schools to maybe push infections up again as we head towards Christmas?
Yeah, I can start off on that. So in the county, we did see rates, in most parts of the county, we saw rates amongst school-aged children falling in the days leading up to half term. So we were pleased to see that because that was clearly before any half-term effect, any significant half-term effect had really kicked in. We, over half term of, yes, we've seen rates come down lower. We've also, not surprisingly, seen testing rates come down as well. It's going to be really important that our children and young people get tested before the return to secondary school and college next week. And the return to school, the mixing that goes on inside and outside of school, quite in the natural course of things, together with other pressures that relate to winter, cooler weather, more of us having to mix with other people indoors rather than outdoors. All of these things are likely to place further upward pressure on COVID rates. And as you've pointed out, that in due course, notwithstanding the enormous effectiveness of the vaccines, does mean, it does start to drive activity in our local NHS and care system as well. Which is absolutely why we need to, all of us, continue not only with making sure that we're vaccinated and at the right time, fully boosted ourselves, but that we also keep going with the other measures alongside this. Because we need to do everything that we can to limit the pressures that the NHS, or any further pressures that the NHS experiences. We wouldn't want those to be pushed any further. And we all need to play our part in helping our health and our social care system through the winter period.
Just from a city perspective, Hugh, our rates have actually remained relatively stable across this two-week half term. And that's because, as we've seen rates coming down in our school-aged children, we've seen them begin to go up in our adult population. So I don't think it's as simple as schools or where transmission are. We've got to remember that all of us, as we're going about and mixing with people, have increased the risk of transmitting COVID. So there's things that we all need to do. But absolutely, a big ask is for our school-aged children and their families to get tested before time starts. So that we can try and keep on top of COVID as much as we can and keep it out of our schools as much as we can. But also asking people to remember when they're enjoying themselves as they're going out and about to, you know, social events or enjoying a meal in a restaurant, to get tested regularly, to wear face coverings, to wash their hands, and to try and keep distance, try and do as much as they possibly can outdoors in order to try and reduce that transmission.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. The next person I saw with hand up was Phil, Phil Brewster.
Hi, guys. Yeah, it's Phil here from ITV News Central TV. Good to see you again. Both, I guess, directed at both Lucy and Jonathan, really. Booster jabs, or Amanda, if you feel this is best for you, pop in. But booster jabs, I'm just trying to find out kind of, first of all, what you think about the importance of them and what the uptake is. Because I think there's a suggestion, it's just purely anecdotal, that a lot of people seem to think, oh, I've had two jabs, I don't need my booster one. So I'm just trying to find out from you, first of all, what is the uptake? Are people coming forward in the same way that they did with the first two vaccines? And secondly, you know, what would you do to say for people kind of just who are maybe kind of thinking, yeah, I'm not sure I need one?
Amanda, did you want to talk about the uptake?
I can do, I'll start then and then you can. So in terms of the uptake for the booster, we did initially see fewer people than we expected come forward for that. But I'm pleased to say that over the last week or so, we have seen a massive change in the people coming forward. And we'll continue to encourage people to come forward for that, to have their booster. So we are really seeing an upturn now. And that's why we've introduced additional measures such as walk-ins for people to have a bit more choice around how to get your vaccine. But we are now seeing a very pleasing upturn in the people coming forward for their boosters. Thank you.
So perhaps I could just add a comment on the back of what Amanda's covered well already, which is to say that, just to underline the importance of the vaccine. So Phil, we just want to emphasise again just how effective these vaccines are at keeping you safe and out of hospital and reducing serious illness. That of itself is of enormous value. Of course, in addition to that, having the vaccine also helps to keep the NHS and care system going this winter. And in connection with that, I'm wondering if I can just broaden out your question a bit and say, in addition to the booster vaccination, it's really important that all of us who are eligible for seasonal vaccinations, for example, the flu vac, take up the opportunity to get that as soon as possible. It's another way of protecting ourselves and it's another way of each of us playing our part in helping our NHS and care system to keep going through the winter. Thanks.
Okay, and just one other thing. You've all kind of mentioned particularly the importance of mask wearing. You guys obviously get out and about just as I do under the city centre. I can tell you, people just don't seem to be wearing masks around. It's like they've given up, forgotten, can't be bothered, I don't know. Why is it that people should still be wearing masks? Can you highlight why you think it's important? I mean, is it to do with the spread or is it because winter's coming up? And what can you say to kind of, to say to people, look, you do need to start wearing them again? Particularly on things like public transport, I was on the tram and bus today, nobody's wearing them.
I guess it's my turn. It's a really good question, Phil, because what we know about face coverings is that they, I wear my face covering to protect you and you wear your face covering to protect me. So face coverings are about us taking care of each other. And that includes people we don't know. So it includes taking responsibility for trying to look after the other people who are on the bus, on the tram, in the restaurant, in the queue outside the restaurant or in the theatre, et cetera. And face coverings are effective. But what makes them really effective is when we all wear them. It's the adding up of all of the little differences that wearing a face covering makes that really makes a big difference. So important that as many people as possible wear their face covering in order to get that protective benefit from it. I guess as somebody who still wears their face covering, it is about habit. And some people have definitely slipped out of the habit really easily. It's about getting back into the habit of having one around with you. And we know the difference that they can make. And we saw this in terms of flu last year, that wearing a face covering and washing your hands really makes a difference to that transmission. So if people want to see rates continuing to come down and want to avoid another lockdown, one of the small things that we can all do is just wearing a face covering. When we're in crowded settings or in indoor settings, wearing a face covering is a really simple way of protecting those around you and encouraging them to wear one as well so that they will protect you. And that way, we can really help to have a good winter where we can And that way, we can really help to have a good winter where we can still go around and see our loved ones and protect the NHS.
Cool. Can I check on another one? Or am I a bit cheeky?
Ooh, that is a bit cheeky.
If it's other people, fine. Please let them go ahead.
Okay, yeah. Can I come back to you at the end, Philip? That's okay. I'd like to get other colleagues in that have their hands up. I will come back to you, I promise. The next hand I saw up was Joel.
Hi, right. I'm from Nottingham Post. How are you?
Hello.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a question regarding an email that was said to be sent out to council leaders and public health directors last week regarding a Plan B by government. And I just wondered if you'd be able to tell me any contingency plans that are kind of in place on Nottingham and Nottinghamshire level, if cases were to kind of follow this trend and worsen over the winter? If you could tell me anything about that.
So thank you for the question, Joel. The, we in city and I'm sure in county will be following closely with the national guidance around the ways in which we can protect our communities. And we are working closely with our colleagues across the new public health organisations of the UK Health Security Agency and the Office of Health Improvement and Disparity, as well as with our NHS colleagues, to make sure that we're doing everything we can to protect our populations. At a local level, we're continuing to do lots of work about making sure that testing is really easy for people to access, that vaccinations, working very closely with our NHS colleagues, are easy for people to accept when the offer comes. And doing lots of media about the things that people can do that can make a difference. And at the moment, those are the things that are really important. I think the message here is, at the stage we're at with Plan A, is us all remembering the things that we can choose to do that makes a difference. And it's about all of us taking some responsibility for that. So not just about big system things, but actually the little things that we can all do as we live our lives to make a difference.
Joel, hi there. I think Lucy's covered that well. Let me be really clear though, that the things that we'll put in place locally are those things which will continue to deliver as part of our local outbreak management plan. And we will remain absolutely intent on avoiding a situation where any kind of further contingency is needed. The arrangements around what those contingencies are are really for government to speak to. But I think, you know, we are all aware, aren't we, of the impact of further restrictions or reintroduction. And we're aware too of the enormous pressures that the health and social care system finds itself under already. So there is really no reason for us to wait for those to intensify. There are things that all of us can double down and do right away to avoid that situation. And that comes back to the things which Lucy has mentioned already. And I just want to give emphasis myself again to the importance. If you have symptoms which might even be just be coming on and be quite mild, but which you think could possibly be coronavirus, it's critical that you get yourself a test and stay at home pending the results of that test. It is really important that as we go out and about, regardless of whether we see other people around us doing it, that we take the opportunity to use face coverings ourselves in crowded enclosed spaces. That is the guidance. It is what government would urge us to do. It's what I would advise and urge people in Nottinghamshire to do as well. In addition to protecting people around us, it's also a way that we can each show respect to people who may have to come away from their homes in order to work. And it's an opportunity that I'm able to take when I get on a bus to show the driver of the bus respect by wearing a face covering myself, which protects him or her. There are other things that we can do as well. We've talked earlier on today about the importance of routine testing, even when we don't have symptoms. And if we keep going with that as well, all of these things are measures that we can take ourselves, which will reduce the chances of us even having to face a contingency or Plan B kind of situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. We have a little bit of time, so I will come back to Phil, as I promised I would. So Phil, your further question, please.
I know, coming for a third bite, cheeky, aren't I? Just a quick call. I mean, you've mentioned the issue about, obviously, when kids were back at school, rates did rise quite sharply. Is there any suggestion, because I've seen, as you probably have on various bits of social media here and there, that letting children or children now having had Covid, that when the rates you suggested were beginning to drop before half term, that we are achieving what some people dub herd immunity? And that we are over the worst of it?
Herd immunity is a very complex public health scenario and can't be attributed to a single group in the population. If children only ever spent time at school and only ever circulated with other people at their school, then that might be the case. But they live in families, they go to clubs, they go to the cinema and the theatre and McDonald's. So it's not necessarily a helpful context. What we are aiming for with our vaccination is to try and build up the immunity across lots of the population so that we can protect people. But herd immunity and Covid, because it's so infectious, actually, we're going to need a really large number of people to either have natural immunity or to be vaccinated in order to achieve that. So if people want to help us achieve herd immunity, then getting vaccinated, if you're eligible, is absolutely the way of doing that.
Phil, I'll just take the opportunity as well to underline that Covid is still a really serious health hazard for people in Nottinghamshire and across the country. It's also a threat to the health and social care system. So we need to continue to take it very seriously. There remain a lot of people who are vulnerable, either because they've not caught coronavirus themselves before to develop immunity or because they've not received a vaccination. And with that in mind, it is essential that we all continue to act carefully and remain cautious.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm just checking now that I've picked up any, all of the questions that people have. That there are no more questions? I don't see any other hands. Phil, your hand is still up, but I've seen you just haven't popped it down again.
I apologise, I'll just lower it, yeah.
That's all right, that's all right. So just double checking that I have got everyone and it looks as though I have. So thank you for your questions. I'm just now going to hand back to the panel and ask them if there are any final messages that they have. I mean, what they've said today is fully comprehensive and lots of good advice and guidance for us. But I'd just like to give members the last opportunity to say something if they wish to do so. I'm going to go first to Amanda.
Nothing further from me, Abby. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Amanda. And then I will go in the order that I spoke, so I'll go to Jonathan next.
No from me, except to thank media colleagues for helping us with this.
Thank you, Jonathan. And Lucy?
No, I think we've covered everything. Thanks, Abby. And thanks to everybody on the call.
Thank you. So that just leaves me to say thank you to the panel for your time once again sharing these important messages with us. Thank you, media colleagues, for coming along, helping us get these messages out to people. Yeah, Covid hasn't gone away, so people still need to be aware that it is nasty and it can really cause a lot of harm. So thank you for getting those messages across. And thank you to other colleagues who have supported us with these briefings. So I'll say, have a very good weekend, be safe during Halloween and we will see you again in a couple of weeks' time. Thank you.
Cheers.